Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Tonight, we have, I believe Jonathan Burkey from, Pastor Jonathan Burkey from Trinity Lutheran. Pastor, thank you for being here. And he will lead us in our invocation. And please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, gracious God, we thank and praise you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for this cooler weather that we're enjoying. And Lord, we thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this nation, in the state, in our town. Lord, we ask your blessing be poured out abundantly upon Casa Grande. We ask that you would give guidance and leadership to our, those who lead and as mayor, as our city council. Lord, we ask that in this meeting, that as they make decisions, that it would be the best for our community and help us to move forward and look to the future. Father, we do thank you for all those who daily defend and protect us in our military. Lord, for those members of armed forces around the world. For those locally, Lord, we pray for our police officers and firefighters. Thank you for all that they do for us to protect us. Ask that you would protect them and bring them home to their families. And Lord, again, we just ask that you would put your blessing upon this meeting, upon our town, that we would just be a place where people experience your love and know your grace. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. Anthony.
Pastor.
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 All right. But the roll call show that all members of the council are present?
So noted.
Next item is our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of October the 7th, 2024, and acceptance of the minutes of planning and zoning commission meeting of September the 5th, 2024, and acceptance of the minutes of the board of adjustments meeting of April 9th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is D, our claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated October 2nd, 2024 through October 15th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Next is our item E, which is our meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes, Mr. Rains?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on council have any changes? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. We have no special presentation. So consent agenda, this is item G. All items listed with asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one rule called vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in the normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on council that wants to remove any of the consent agenda items?
No.
Anybody from the public?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item H, which is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to come to the podium, state your name and your address. Please keep your comments to three minutes and understand that it is not on the agenda, so we can't have any further discussion. Is there anybody here who would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public comment and we'll move to item I-1, award of contracts and resolution number 5708. Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I want to talk to you about resolution to award a contract to municipal emergency services, also, we call them MES, for three intel tech solo rescue SCBA decontamination washers for the fire department. These were, these are being grant funded. It was a Prop 202 tribal gaming grant that is going to pay for this. It's $124,772. You guys already approved to receive the grant several weeks ago. This is for the purchase of the equipment. Essentially, there'll be one of these in 503, 504s, and we haven't decided whether it'll be 501 or 502, but this will allow our folks, when they come back from a fire, rather than hand cleaning an SCBA, which is a lengthy time-consuming process, they can put it in this machine and they'll decontaminate it for us. And it does a better job than you do when you do hand washing. We are purchasing these under a source well, the source well contract, and that is about it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Sounds like some good equipment.
Thanks for the grant.
Yeah, thanks for the grant. Was it Sahila?
Yeah.
One of those 10 grants we've got from them this year? Oh, wow. Okay. All right, seeing no other comments, then I'll call for resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 5708, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Municipal Emergency Services, Inc., for the purchase of three decontamination washers, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Municipal Emergency Services, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5708 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next on our agenda is I-2. This is considering approval of resolution number 5709. Chief?
Yes, sir. This is to award a contract to U.S. Digital Designs, which is essentially a part of Honeywell, for the alerting system for station 503. This is part of the CIP, the FFNE that you guys have already approved. This is the actual purchase because of the amount. We're bringing it back to council. It is $155,313.70. We are, we've been using Westnet, which is a company out of Huntington Beach. And we're not, it's not that we're unhappy with Westnet, but the problem with Westnet is anytime something breaks or we need something done here, they have to send a technician. And we get charged for that. When they drive him out here, he stays in a hotel, he eats, eats food for those two or three days when he's working on the system. This is a Phoenix-based company that most of the Phoenix-based Valley firefighters, fire departments use for their alerting systems. So we're switching to this. We'll have local technicians, we'll have people here in town. If something happens, they can come right down and work on it.
Nice.
We are, this is just for the portion, we have to buy a portion to go to the communication center to do the alerting, and then the rest of it is for the equipment and the install at new fire station 503. We are buying this under a NPP gov cooperative purchase contract, and the station's already, the station's already prepped to have this installed, so we're all set with that. Do you guys have any questions?
Station's looking good.
It is. We're trying to keep things moving along. I, I get, I sense the frustration, frustration from some of our business owners when they say it's very difficult sometimes to do things in town, because it's very difficult. Some of the utilities are very difficult to work with. We're going to have a fire station that's built and done, and we won't be able to flush the toilets. So we're working through that, but it's been a tough process.
Okay. Don't even have to ask who that is. I know who it is. Anybody have any questions for Chief?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't guess it, actually. It's, it's a little surprising, actually.
Okay. We'll talk later. All right, no questions for Chief, then I'll call for resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5709, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Honeywell International, Inc., for the purchase of a fire station alerting system, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Honeywell International, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution 5709 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Thanks, Chief. All right, next is item I-13, considering approval resolution number 5710. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a bridging agreement to allow Ellison Mills Contracting LLC to provide construction services to relocate manhole number 12 on our Burris sewer line. The base bid amount is six, excuse me, $609,056 with a contingency of $60,944 for a total not to exceed $670,000. Rail spurs are obviously a key component to the success of our industrial area, and they have been planned and are currently moving forward with construction on several of those rail spurs. We have a manhole that's part of our Burris line, manhole number 12, that is in direct conflict with where that planned infrastructure needs to go, so we need to get this moved. Union Pacific did agree to pay all costs associated with this. When we originally budgeted for this, in this year's budget, our estimate was $320,000. Obviously, the price has gone up. We learned a lot about the relocation of this manhole. It became much more complex when we started digging a little deeper. UPRR, the railroad, is going to reimburse us the full cost, but because we are short in the budget amount, and to stay within our procurement code, we are going to be transferring funds from the Trickle Road Sewer Improvement Project because we've not started that yet. We'll use those funds to offset the money that we don't have, and then once we're reimbursed, we'll recoup that and put that back into that project.
Did you say, "Union Pacific's going to pay for this?"
Yes.
Did I hear you right?
So this will be the most we've ever gotten out of Union Pacific, ever.
I was going to say, I'm stunned.
Usually, the money goes the other direction. They've been very cooperative, not the easiest to work with, but, you know, we enjoy our relationship with them and want to continue that. We are using, asking council to approve this, using a Pima County job order contract that allows Ellison Mills to do the scope of work through that contract. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? Is this the spur, Kevin, the spur that they're going to build?
Yeah, if you're familiar with the area, at the end of Burris Road, before you hit the railroad tracks, there's a informal road there called Cow Town. And so the spur will be following that, that road alignment to the northwest, and then eventually feed into the different industrial projects as you go further to the west.
Okay. And this manhole's in that area?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Manhole number 12. Manhole number 12.
I can find that on our website. All right, seeing no more questions or comments, I'll entertain a resolution number, please Gloria.
Resolution number 5710, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Ellison Mills Construction, LLC, for the relocation of a city manhole, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Ellison Mills Construction, LLC, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5710 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item I-4. This is consider approval of resolution number 5711. Mr. Rains?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Staff is asking the mayor and council to consider resolution 5711, which authorizes funding agreements with Pinal County and Arizona Water Company for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for water infrastructure improvements. And the council may recall, approximately one year ago, you entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County, with the city serving as a, essentially a fiscal agent for these funds that were made available. We knew that the funds were going to be utilized for water system improvements, and, but there's been a few minor changes that have occurred since that point, and so we're asking the mayor and council to consider this resolution, entering into funding, funding agreements with both of those entities. The original IGA gave the city manager the authority to enter into the IGA with Pinal County solely. So because of the changes, I thought I'd spend a little bit of time articulating those to the council, giving you the context before you consider the resolution. You may recall that $15 million was made available to make water system improvements to enhance the drinking water systems in Casa Grande. Obviously, Arizona Water, as the water provider becomes a subrecipient to that. What we have found as we moved through this process and in our attempts to comply with the ARPA funds and the state requirements through the, that they're required to follow through the federal guidelines, that we needed to spend some time establishing a scope of services that ultimately would provide an enhanced service on our, our water service on our west side of town. And we believe that, that the scope that Arizona Water is proposing in their funding agreement will achieve that. It actually is adding new water supply to the, to the Casa Grande system. It's adding new treatment and new main line. But essentially, they, the way this process will work is that we will enter into a funding agreement with Pinal County that is very typical to the funding agreements that they enter into with the state. It looks mirror, a mirror image. The mayor and council has a copy of that in your packet. There have been no changes to that particular document. There have been some minor changes to that of the subrecipient of Arizona Water. Nothing that is material. The primary component of that are really twofold. Number one, that this is a reimbursement process, which ultimately requires Arizona Water to pay for their, the contractor, and there's a procurement requirement that we meet federal procurement standards. And, and our team has been working the last several months very closely with both the county and Arizona Water to ensure that the procurement components are going to be solidified. And in fact, we have a document pending council's final authority this evening to, to put out on the street. The, the fundamental component that I think is important for everybody knows that we have, is that we have a very narrow timetable. The, the county and Arizona Water need this, these particular documents approved by the end of October. The funds then have to be obligated by the state of Arizona before the end of December, and then at that point, Arizona Water will have roughly 18 months to build the infrastructure. They intend to do so in three separate scopes. They'll focus primarily in phase one on the, on the new water supply, which will be a new well and the treatment. Phase two will be some of the additional components around that campus, and phase three will be the, the main water line, which is going to require some dedications right away, which staff has been working with property owners on as, as well. And so essentially, the funds have to be expended within 18 months, and then there will be a reimbursement. So Arizona, the city is essentially contracting with Arizona Water through the funding agreement. We're ensuring that they're meeting the procurement and the scoping requirements, and then from there, we will be asking the county to reimburse us, who then asked the state to reimburse. So that is the way this particular alignment will take place. But I know you have copies of the IGA that was originally approved between the city and Pinal County. You also have copies of the funding agreements in your packets this evening. Staff is asking, as part of this resolution, that you authorize the city manager to enter into those funding agreements and take on the necessary procurement and fiscal agent responsibilities that are needed to ensure that Arizona Water is meeting the ARPA federal requirements. And, and so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll pause and entertain any questions for the mayor and council. It is a $15 million funding through these ARPA funds. They, they could, they could be used for water, sewer, and broadband. The state was desirous of us using them specifically for water infrastructure improvements, which is why we added Arizona Water to this particular dialogue.
Like you said, it had to be done by the end of October. Does this need a second read, or is this it?
No. In fact, Mayor, thank you for bringing that to my attention. The mayor, the mayor and council did approve the $15 million budget authority as part of our fiscal year '25 budget, and we did include this project in our original ordinance of our capital improvement program. And so what you need to see, what we're asking for is a resolution that meets, that meets the expectation, because you've previously approved the ordinance.
Okay. So we're good to go with?
One read.
One read, okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Seeing no questions, then Gloria, I'll entertain a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5711, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing funding agreements with Pinal County and Arizona Water Company for the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the water infrastructure improvements, authorizing the execution of agreements by the city manager, authorizing the acceptance of funds, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve resolution number 5711 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other additional information need to be tagged to that, in terms of your comments, or is it just the resolution as presented?
Just the resolution as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we are on the home stretch. We have no boards and conventions, no ordinances, no public hearings, no executive session, so reports.
No report.
All right, Donna?
I'll just mention a couple of things. It is National Friends of the Library Week, and I know that the Friends of Library here in Casa Grande have done an amazing job for us, so I just wanted to, to give a shout out to them. And also, this past Sunday, Mayor, when you did the State of the City last March, we highlighted a group called Cleanup Casa Grande, and they had less than 100 folks on their Facebook page that they, they were represented. This past Sunday, eight of those members went out over by Lowe's and Harbor Freight, and they collected 28 bags of trash, relocated four shopping carts, and they also took four big bags to the recycle that Rick Wilson did. And I just, I, you know, want to thank them. I will tell you that because of the work they've done, they have nearly 375 members now on that group who go out randomly in their neighborhoods when they're walking their dogs and stuff, and they are cleaning up our community one street at a time. And I'm just so appreciative of the work that they do. I know they, they sometimes will talk with Larry, and he does a great job at corresponding with them, but they really have made a difference. And if you've ever been at that corner, you know, I'm hoping that our businesses will take control of their own land and clean up their land, because these people, I believe the oldest lady said she was 77 years old, and the youngest was in his 20s. And so I just, I am appreciative that we have citizens that take pride in their community, so I just, I wanted to highlight that. That's it.
Beth?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to tell everyone in the community, thank you for coming out to Rotary Club's Oktoberfest last weekend. It was a beautiful evening, had over 3,000 people there.
Wow.
No prob, I mean, everybody was great, had a great time, families, everybody. So thank you all for your support for the Rotary Club, and that's the kind of events we want to keep happening. This Saturday's a Halloween stroll downtown from 11 to 2, family-friendly event, kind of trick-or-treating at the businesses downtown. Free event. And backed by popular demand is the Youth Commission's Day of Shredding, which will be this Saturday at First American Credit Union, 1001 North Pinal Avenue, from 9 to 12, and also recycling. You can bring electronics as well. So we'll see you Saturday at the usual location, 1001 North Pinal, First American Federal Credit, First American Credit Union.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to our mayor, to the city council, the members that were able to, to come to the Juan Hughes Memorial dedication for the prayer garden there at First Press Church ran by Seats Hope. We're just so thankful for y'all to able to come, and also the city officials that were able to come too. We have over 75 people that came to that, and it was really good. So thank you on behalf of the committee, as well as Linda Hughes. Thank you.
And you know, it was such a beautiful event, and to celebrate the life of one of our spiritual leaders, we miss him dearly. So thank you for doing that. And on that note, I just wanted to, you know, thank our fire department. As you all know, we had a fire this weekend at St. Anthony's Church, and I just, that's the church I go to. But I just wanted to thank Chief Keane and the fire department and all the surrounding communities that were there, you know, Father and the parishioners and the bishop, you know, I mean, they're all grateful for, you know, the, you know, your response. And so we know there's severe damage, you know, we're still waiting, you know, to hear what happened, investigation. Obviously, it's devastating for the community. A lot of people, we were talking about it today, you know, many of us, even if you weren't a parishioner there, you've gone to weddings there, funerals there, different celebrations. So it's definitely, you know, it's just sad. It's really sad. And, and the priest is doing what he can, but we're grateful that the community center's there, and that's where the services will be. So again, thank you for, you know, the chief, to all of your staff and, and the surrounding communities that came and helped with that. So this time of year, yeah, there's so many activities. Matt, you know, Larry, you know, the foundate, the Rotary event was such a great event. It really is, and it's such a beautiful day and, or evening that night, and, you know, so many people were just having a really good time. And I had my 89-year-old dad with me, and he had a great time. He closed the thing down, waiting to see if he was the winner of that, you know, that, that, the raffle at the end. He wasn't. But, but no, so it was really good. Thank you for the seating that you had, because sometimes we have these events and there's not seating, and so when you have some of the older people there, you know, he had a really good time. So we, and I did too, but great event. And you mentioned the Halloween stroll, but there's also the Halloween, the other event on Friday at Palmason Sports Complex from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. That's the, what is it called? The Halloween Fall Festival?
Fall.
Yes.
Harvest.
Harvest festival, but it, that's a great event. Harvest Festival, but that's a great event, you know. Of course, all the costume contests and everything that goes on there. So hope everyone can go out to that. And, you know, a couple of things that we talk about, you know, challenges that were faced here in the community, you know, childcare is one, and I wanted to thank Richard Wilkie for having the roundtable, having our childcare professionals and some of the nonprofit organizations that serve that community. We know it's an issue that we're, you know, facing, and so it was nice having those businesses there with us to see how we can brainstorm and see what we can do. So thank you for starting that, and I'm really looking forward to being on that committee, that task force. So in the elementary school district, the mayor and I were both there. Also, a business roundtable, again, bringing business leaders, you know, throughout the community to address some of the, you know, the things going on with the education in our community. So that was another great roundtable. So that's it for me.
Bob?
Mayor, I'm happy to report that the Cardinals are up 7 to 6, just going into the third quarter.
All right. The doubter than I am.
You coming back?
Yeah, I'll be back. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thanks for that update.
No, you're welcome.
We had some interviews tonight. We had nine, actually nine people apply for two spots in our planning and zoning, so I would encourage everybody to continue to look for our -- the opportunities to help the city and to get on a board or commission. And so I know we have some more coming up, actually in the next two weeks. I think the transit board has some openings that I'm aware of, and obviously, we get openings all the time because we have like 10 different boards, and so people come and go from those boards. So I would encourage you to sign up on our website to receive the alerts and the information from the city. We'll also send you other stuff, too, so it's good information to have. You can even hear about all these events that everybody has talked about up here. Those alerts also get sent out. And again, kudos to Kiwanis Club and all the volunteers. The Rotary Club, sorry. Rotary Club? I don't know why I said Kiwanis. Sorry, man.
We like them.
I know better. And anyway, all the volunteers as well who helped you guys out. There was a lot of people that did a lot of work on that program, so. And that's pretty much all I have. I know that this Friday, there's a Red Ribbon Week proclamation at Casa Grande Union High School, which kind of some of the folks had put on, and it's a national campaign that promotes drug prevention, education, awareness. And so October is the month that it's observed, so we'll be issuing a proclamation at the high school on Friday. So looking forward to that, and you all have a great rest of your week. Meeting adjourned.